Agenda, call to order and vocal. Andy Brown. For coffee?
I think there is because Bonnie's the only one missing. Right? Out of people that are formally. Reed applied to be on the committee but he hasn't been here for a meeting yet.
Yeah. Oh yeah, he told me he's retaking a test today.
Reed Kwanja, he applied but he hasn't been to a meeting yet. Yvonne is an honorary member, so we don't need her to be in place. I think technically Yvonne is the only one missing, so I think we do have it. So we can go ahead with them.
So, for coffee?
I'm here.
And CJ Octavian, I'm here. I'm gonna, I'll take minutes while Bonnie's. Yeah, she is. So number two, oral communications for items not on the agenda. That would be great. And now we have the approval of minutes. All which are on the back.
I second that.
All in favor? Aye. So minutes have been approved. Next is our new business, which is the wildfire or wildlife, sorry, event awareness. And the proclamation, which we have Darcy to talk about a little bit and help us plan.
Fantastic. Hi, Darcy, I'm Brooke. Nice to meet you.
Hi, yes, sorry, I'm driving. It's a busy day. But I appreciate you guys meeting. Can you hear me okay? Yes?
The volume down.
Oh, down, sorry.
Is this better?
You wanna try now, Darcy?
Yeah, testing, testing. How's the sound?
It's still pretty loud, maybe a little bit quieter?
Test, testing, testing. How's this? A little better?
A little bit better. It's still, it's still really loud.
Okay. So the mayor, vice mayor and council member had this idea of having two things in January. The first is the wildlife awareness month proclamation at the council meeting on January fourteenth. That is, as we would say, more pomp and circumstance. With a recipient and Mary has some ideas on that relative to the mountain lion cub rescue from last year. Or earlier this year, but one idea was to have a community awareness day dubbed Wildlife Day. And I know it's coming up soon, so any assistance if you want and can help us organize that event would be great. I don't know if this group has ever done one, but the vision would just be any a community awareness event and it doesn't necessarily have to be a full day on the weekend. There are things we can do during the week that are very popular. Potentially partnering with the library if they see a way to work this into their curriculum or story time or stories, but it's a wide open canvas for what you think might be possible. And
Community Awareness, so on anything or on wildlife specific?
Wildlife. So wildlife, yes. There is a specific area for this wildlife awareness month in January. And that is obviously very broad too, but I would say that the genesis of this was thinking about the mountain lion cubs. And how they were rescued, but as you know, we, we also had a bat incident. I think you guys might have been aware of this. It was very unfortunate that there was a bat that was infected with rabies that had a seizure on the playground and I would say there's a component there. We were very nervous that a child might have been exposed to rabies. It's quite rare. Um, but when I heard it was on the playground, that prompted me to think, you know, do children, do we have an awareness about things like that? And around the mountain lion, right? It's an awareness around what to do if a mountain, if a, if an animal was injured. So those are just the ideas I have, but the, oh, an awareness month could also take on different forms, so I don't wanna limit you necessarily to a live event if you don't have bandwidth. Other ideas are running some articles in our newsletters, um e-news blasts. Uh, you could make a presentation at the council meeting of like five to 10 minutes if that was interesting to you. Other ideas, if that makes sense.
Yes, it does. So, um, one of the things that we were planning on doing next year was we were wanting to do more of our wildflower walks, which we did a few, um, a couple of years ago. So we talked about getting those started and then possibly um, in conjunction with that, handing out wildflower seeds. So maybe instead of waiting until April or May to do that, we could try to have, um, one in January, so talking about um, you know, different pollinators, different wildlife that depend on our wildflowers. And then maybe, um, through the town or through our fund, we'd be able to get a bulk rate of wildflower seeds so that everybody could scatter out California poppies or lupins or whatever it is. To support the, the really small wildlife that's in everybody's backyard.
That's a great idea, yes. So on the, on the budget.
It would kind of kickstart our wildflower walk so that, you know, people would be used to them happening maybe every three or four months.
Yes, every quarter. Yes, with some of the other committees that like Culture Arts, for example, we're trying to get them to have quarterly events. All different, of course, but some themes. So I like that idea a lot and we, we can come up with a budget on this. I know CJ talked to our finance director. Generally committees get around a thousand dollars budget, but it can be more. There can also be, um budgets for honorariums for speakers, for example. Um, but not everyone's interested in that. The other idea that other groups have had around awareness is, um, like movie nights in the community hall or in, uh, in other venues or, and perhaps there's really interesting like wildlife and wild, and, uh, wildflower um, movies. That can be shown.
I know that through, I believe it was through the Banff Film Festival, you're now able to kind of buy all of the films that were shown at the Banff Film Festival.
Wow.
Most of them are outdoor nature based. Um, I'm gonna be going to a showing of that in a, in a couple, or next week, actually. And so I'll have an idea of kind of what the selection is, but it's a pretty good rate that you could buy like the whole, the whole film festival and then you can stream it yourself. Um, any of those films. So, you know, if there were enough that kind of were in conjunction, you know, maybe with the nature and trails or with the trails committee, they might, there might be another one within that system that is more about trails and being active. And maybe another one that's on sustainability. I'm not, I'm not quite sure. I'll get the list next week. But that might be something that, you know, instead of having a, uh, just a regular movie, it would be more, you know, documentaries on all of the different uh, facets of town.
Yes, that's, sorry, I'm supposed to be talking in a whisper. Yes, that's a great idea. I love that idea. So while, again, when we look, think about wildlife awareness month, it can take many different shapes and forms. And there's lots of different months. We have, you know, Mental Health Awareness Month and Black History Month, and we just had Native American Awareness Month. So there's lots of different things you can do. Some can be very obviously subtle and low work. Uh, like newsletter articles and then obviously events are a little more work, but I'm super open to different forms of events to make your planning easier. But what would be nice is to make this an annual thing. So maybe, again, in the in every quarter you do different events, but one of them and potentially or aligning in January is wildlife awareness.
I know many years back, we used to have events in the community hall and have a bunch of organizations come to broadcast for their their kind of activities that they do. So for example, like a petting zoo for kids and then maybe another group can come to talk about wildflowers and like more nature related topics.
Uh, we have that at the town picnic, CJ. We've tried to funnel those groups into the picnic. Um, some successfully. I think like the conservation committee set up a whole wildfire flyout flower display, but honestly, I think the feedback was not a lot of people were interested. But I think people love seeing movies, so that's a good idea. And then, um, there are, maybe we could combine that with some um, speakers or other people who can speak. And that's maybe more engaging, if that makes sense. The, we have done fairs. We, the most recent fair was a fire awareness fair and I, and I think that got a lot of turnout because fire was a hot topic then. But what I've heard recently is people are interested in like speaker series, they're interested in seeing movies, they're interested in like a educational aspect. Does that, does that resonate with you?
Yeah, we had a, we had a bird hike with, uh, someone from the Audubon Society. Is that a year and a half ago? And, oh my gosh, we had so many people come to it.
Yeah, that's, that's a good example of like you can get one speaker, yeah, and that, and people definitely love that.
I think the trick, the trick is, is that it used to be that, you know, it was a volunteer that would come and lead those. And it's been harder and harder to get, to get volunteers. We found that with the Star Party too. Um, with getting the volunteers to bring their telescopes, it's been harder every year to try to get them to come.
Well, now, I know that other groups are doing the honorarium for the speakers. I don't know if that entices them. I've heard it can be like two to three hundred dollars. So, again, I don't know if that helps people.
Right, to be able to get someone from Audubon if it's, you know, they're not just sending someone unpaid to do it, yeah.
Yeah. And like the Banff movie thing, like if the, the town could probably buy that and then it could apply to different groups. Because we're trying to, and so Culture Arts is trying to look into more of a speaker series event. I'm not sure when they will launch it, but their idea was also combining like speakers with a documentary and some education piece. They thought a lot of people would love that. So it's up to you if you wanna start like small and do really easy stuff like the newsletter articles, showing up at the town council with maybe a presentation with some slides. Um, maybe the, there you hand out the wild flower packets, maybe you organize the hike too, if it's not too much. Um, there's a lot of ideas. I throw it back to you to what is reasonable and what excites you, right? Like what, what you would like to do.
Probably organizing a hike would be great and maybe having some slides where speakers come talk about wildlife before the hike.
Okay, that sounds great. Um, I couldn't hear you.
What are the constraints around, uh, renting and in insurance as far as the town, uh, built, the town room?
So for town events, there's no insu- it, we would cover the insurance if we need it. We typically only need it for larger events. The bigger challenge is on weekdays, we can only have one event in there. Or sorry, on weekends, we can have one event because we don't staff it. And then the other challenge that we have, which is unfortunate, so we don't have any AV systems in there. We don't have an amplified mic and we don't have the ability right now to sh- to show videos. So I am trying to change that. There may be other venues to, um, to play. Um, to play videos. And if it's a small group, for example, Mary, like we can go into the town center, that little conference room, but we're, we are working on a better video setup. But I've also been told folks have, you know, like the out, the outdoor movie setup and some people have volunteered to just bring that from their house. To pop it up.
Wow, that's great. Uh, al- also the, uh, Christ Church has, uh, can do videos inside the church, I mean, can do screening inside of the church. I recommend everybody come Friday. Yeah, maybe. Uh, to the silent movie and the organ's gonna play. Uh, there's a very famous organist and there's a very famous silent movie that's gonna be shown. You could check out tomorrow. So that they, then they did a cocoa for, uh, Halloween and I think it was a success. So they, we, we close and we could just have a movie there.
So Darcy, can I ask a question? Um, with this proposed, um
You're not allowed to turn it and tell you.
With this proposed wildlife month, are other committees doing other things already that are set on the calendar or not yet?
You're the, you're the only ones. Yeah, you're the only ones. And then for the proclamation, we do have some ideas of who could come. I think Mary had some good ideas at Fish and Wildlife, but I don't see this overlapping with the other committees. I just wanted to share ideas that other committees are having and those are running like separately. Um, but your work overlaps a little bit with Culture Arts and they're obviously more art based. Um, but again, they're just looking at speaker series and movie events focused on arts and music. And then the Conservation Committee though, they're definitely very focused on wildflowers. You might wanna connect with them, but unfortunately I have to go to an, um, another meeting. I apologize. When you guys set the date, I wasn't double booked, but, um, you can definitely, CJ, reach out to me via email with follow-up and I'm happy to help.
Okay, thank you so much.
And we can also meet independent with any questions you have. I just wanna sort of, as they would say, plant the seed here and then follow up whenever you need help.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, bye.
So how long has she been the town manager?
August.
Okay, so we also had a proclamation to make. Is this like talking and getting the event together and deciding what we wanna do?
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding. So we need to make a proclamation? Is that what you're saying?
No, we need to like there is one and we need to organize an event.
There's a proclamation for the town to, for January to be wild, wildlife month.
Wildlife month, and I think we have a day. It's not real early in the, um it's not real early in the month, would be good if it was really early in the month, but I think it's towards the end.
Except for if an event is early in the month, most people are out of town for, during the holidays, so no one would be able to hear and point it.
It's the second, fourth, uh, wind day, so it would be the fourth wind day in January. And we would, the, the event that we would actually, that's easy because we do it every month. The mayor makes a proclamation that this, and we need the proclamation, including the mayor's proclamation. So I've written this sort of a script and it would be great to get your input and then, but she basically does and figured out, oh, it won't be her, that would be great. So, uh, hopefully he's on board or you know, how, how on board he is, but this is what Darcy and I have booked out is that, uh, we would do the presentation, maybe you guys would receive it, but I was, or be there, at least. I want CJ there, but we were thinking the fishing day, the people who were involved in the recipe. They come and people who did the book.
Right.
The author and there are probably people who did the combs and
Right.
And it turns out that Nancy Bund actually and, uh, but just sort of to, to make, recognize all that work that went into this. And of course for me, it's all about cross, uh, like crossings and how we deal with traffic and how we
How we slow people down.
Where, what we can do is sort of the reason why it was actually effective to get, I mean, how trans they are.
Well, the, the speed limit, the speed sign on Wiskey Hill is working unbelievably well. Have you noticed it? It's the one that just, it's a temporary one, it's nothing permanent. And it comes and it goes, and it comes and it goes. And it just, the speed limit, there's thirty-five on Wiskey Hill.
On Wiskey Hill, yeah.
That's so. Yeah, but if you're not there all the time, getting tickets, but, um, they will have the meter out that tells you, you know, weeks. And it tells you if you're speeding and then once you get, and I've noticed that people are driving so much slower. So I drive that, you know, six times a day. And people are driving so much slower since they put that up, but it's it really works and it's temporary. So you don't want anything permanent in town, right?
I'm not worried about it either.
Oh my goodness, it works. It really, really works. And my friends that live on Wiskey Hill. Yeah, and my friends that live on Wiskey Hill, I have one specific client, they've noticed that speeding's really gone down since they put that up. So I don't know if that's something you rent from the sheriff. But for example, right down there in the area where people drive so fast. Um, it might really
And we could actually help on this Wildlife Awareness Month.
Exactly, yeah.
And, uh, how fast do you run? So that, that means, that, that is something that I I can help with Ed Holland and
Yes.
Yeah, uh, Kevin Lee Wells. Other sheriff, other sheriff's liaison, so they would be, they're capable of putting those signs up.
There's also been a lot of, there's also been a lot of wildlife, uh, hills on, right at the intersection of, um Portola Ri- or Portola Valley and Woodside. That stretch right there that's past the, um, Valley Quest Church. This is a long straight and so people go really, um, fifty, fifty-five. Yeah, or just it, just a temporary speed. The second one on Wiskey Hill, it's temporary. It just comes and then it goes away for a while and then it comes back up. Just tells people how much they're and it's really helping. So if we were to have that, you know, where the mountain lions hit or here where the coyote and, uh, here with it.
I hate to break in, but you guys aren't talking in the microphone, so it's pretty much inaudible to anyone online. Not that there's so many of us.
I'm so sorry.
Hi, Dave.
Hello.
David, it's Uh, they're brainstorming about things we can do for, uh, Wildlife Awareness Month in January. Including now we're talking about ways of slowing traffic down, in particular uh, having a, a temporary, uh, sign up on, on Portola Road, maybe in two different places. Different times, moving it around. Wildlife Awareness Month. You're going forty-five, slow down or something.
Yeah, I'm totally in favor of that and frankly, I'm in favor of what, what the cy- professional cyclists call traffic furniture, or road furniture. Um, uh, you know, we have a racetrack on, or, uh, which we can, we can see because of the people who've been killed there, running into things. So yes, I'm a huge fan of making streets safer and slower. And if you can't do that, then absolutely signs or whatever I think is, is really important. So thumbs up.
That feels like something we can do by January. Because I'm the liaison, I am the liaison for traffic, um, safety. I could see about that and I could get them involved in that part if that would be easier.
So you, Ed would be the one to find out how much it would cost to rent the sheriffs.
They, they, they should have some access to that.
Is this gonna be part of our budget or?
That wouldn't be part of, like, you're, you're not just providing the ideas. You wouldn't have to pay for the signs, that's too much. But the, what, the budget idea was about the event.
Just because of the bandwidth of the committee, I think it's a great idea to, um, have a movie night. Instead of having a bunch of, um, exhibits or a lot of legwork that needs to go to, into it, I think doing a movie night with some type of documentary would be great.
We could try that.
Yeah, I wonder, um, we used to sponsor a bunch of events with, uh, rehab raptors. Um, when I was doing photo things. And I wonder if anybody around here has a rehab center that can bring out, um, a bunch of critters, if you will. And, um, you know, they want some money, but it's a donation thing and we can probably find somebody to, to give them the fee. It's usually not month, much, but um, and then especially the kids would you know, sort of get to see some of these things firsthand, which, I don't know, that, that's something that, that I've done before in other places, so. Um, that, or, or a bunch of movie documentaries about art critters, either way.
I do know, David, that the schools do have, um, people come in with wildlife. So they, they just had a presentation last month with a whole bunch of animals that came into both schools in the district.
Oh, awesome, that's great.
I know Bonnie and I talked about having, like, the Audubon Society come to potentially talk about wildlife and the birds.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm not sure this takes, it's like a huge amount of time. We just basically would say, okay, we're gonna have these sick, try to have these six exhibits. Um, and we call, and then each of us calls one person or two people and see if they'll do it and, and generally they say yes. And they just, they bring their own stuff. We come in and we set up a couple hours early. We hold the event for, say, two or three hours and then take down, so it'd be like a, like a Sunday, basically. That would be kind of the major commitment. Um, I, I'm, I have time to, to do that much. Well, we, we'd need to pick a date, um, but I was thinking maybe at the, I, I was thinking, maybe at the end of January. And, uh, we could get those critter people that Dave was talking about. Maybe he could give us a phone number or maybe he'll give them a call. Um, uh, and, um, you know. Sorry. Yeah, carry on. Something was cool.
Oh, uh, the bat person, there's a bat person, you know, we have this
Oh, uh the bat person, there's a bat for, you know, we have this, we have a Wildlife Awareness Issue retreat of our dead bat, a rabid bat. And there's a bat lady who comes to do a bat inside.
We definitely need her.
Right?
Yeah. Yeah, that's.
Could I give some input? I just don't know how to lift my arm.
How do we see someone lifting their arm?
And now I'll.
It's Mary Ann and.
It's Mary Ann. Um it's Mary Ann, the chair of the Conservation Committee. The Conservation Committee has spent the last fourteen months working on wildlife. And we would be happy to help you in this. We have a movie. We have lots of stuff. We would be very happy to work with you.
Yeah, so I think I think it's fairly straight. I mean, it's not really rock. It's not really that hard for us to do this. Um we've done it many times before and um the heavy lift is just big. He's basically being there on that day. Um but in the month of like before the end of the month, basically at this meeting, we could decide, okay, who we're gonna, who what ta- what tables do we want? Then we each would take one or two folks and we'd give them a call and then report back. We just need somebody to project manage. You know, and CJ, I don't know if you're a chair, you could maybe make a spreadsheet or something. We could update the spreadsheet. And uh with, you know, who who we've called and who's able to who's able to come. But um yeah, so I guess there there's uh we had we had a guy with a or a guy or a gal, I can't remember. With an eagle with a bald eagle that came uh for Predator Day. That was fun. Um I'm sure Bay Area Lime Foundation would put a table out. And um we, you know, uh Mid Penn could come and bring their cougar. They have a cougar and. Yeah, yeah, okay.
So I propose if we were to look at the date of the date of January twenty fifth, it's the last Sunday. In January, but it'll be the Sunday before the fourth Wednesday, which is when you were talking about the proclamation happening.
Yeah, I think that's.
That all that would be happening within the, you know, three days of each other.
Yeah, I think that's a great day. And um if we if we set the hours maybe like one to one to four or something like that. Um and basically and have the the people that are setting up come at noon or or maybe we have a two to two to five or something, some something like that. Um and then um uh they would bring everything. They would bring their banner, their stuffed cougar, their um whatever literature, so on. We could even have um, you know, um a speaker potentially at one, you know, maybe to open up the. We could have our our council member, Mary Huffy, potentially make a proclamation, you know, do the announcement actually at the at the event.
On the fourteen.
Yeah, I'm I'm out. I'm a fifty ten fourteen.
You don't have to be.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, because that's right whenever school goes back and college kids go back. So I know that the first two weeks of January are.
But it would be our chance to be kickoff.
Kickoff, yes. And you could have instead of a football to kick it off, it's an eagle's egg. I mean.
There you go. There we go. So we could have Post come. Okay, so why don't we let's make a list of the of the different of the people that we could. So mi- I think Mid Penn and Post are two really important ones.
How about the what if we were to have the funny band come, the um Banana Slug Band?
We have a banana slug band?
Yeah, of some sort. That would be fun. They sing songs about kid songs about wildlife.
Great. Do you know them? All right, I you know, that sounds like a lot of fun. Banana Slug Band.
Is the post just P O S T?
P O S T, Peninsula Open Space Trust. Yeah, so Stuffed Mountain Lion. I don't know how do people feel about that, but anyway, it's pretty cool, actually.
And then we also had the Audubon Society.
Yeah, so um we can, I I mean, I know the people at Santa Clara, Audubon, Santa Clara, well, they call it Bird Alliance now because Audubon is bad dude. It was considered a bad dude, so they had to change their name. So now they're called the Santa Clara County Audubon Society. Or Bird Alliance. Okay. So you wanna write that down, CJ? Like, okay, so I'll do, I can call Post. And Mary's gonna call Mid Penn because she's knows them well. And I can call Bay Area Lime Foundation. So if you just write me, write all these people down, like who I'm gonna, who's gonna call who to invite them. Bay Area Lime Foundation. Which is right here at and the bat. Yeah, yeah, actually, yeah, there's a funny story about that, but yes, let's get the bat lady. I don't know how to get the bat lady. Okay, so. Oh, sorry, Dave.
Oh, no worries. Um mid February is the Great Backyard Bird Count. Um so it might be fun because as a practical matter, ninety eight percent of the wildlife that people see are birds or maybe rats.
Yeah, two years ago, we did a, two years ago, we did a bird walk, um and I said that I would do one this year. And the Bird Alliance people said that they wanted to do it in February or March, so we'll. We were gonna maybe talk about that at our next next month meeting.
Okay, I was just thinking that it would be a good um if not that Cornell Ornithology has a big outpost here, but. Um the Audubon folks do to even have a table saying, here's the Great Backyard Bird Count and a way to get involved or something.
Uh huh.
I think that's a great idea.
You could bring some bird pictures.
Yeah.
And Mary has found the bird lady or the ba- the bat lady, rather.
The Corky Kirk, the Northern California Bats? Yeah, yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Corky Kirk.
Okay, so what I have so far is that Mary is gonna call the Mid Penn Open Space and Post.
No, I'm calling Post.
Oh, you're calling Post. Is it different than Mid Penn Open Space?
Yeah, I'll explain that later.
And then Bonnie's doing Post, the Banana Slug Band.
No, I can't. Yeah.
You're doing. And Bonnie's also doing the Bay Area Lime Foundation. And are you doing the Audubon Society too?
Yeah, I can do the Bird Alliance. So it's Santa Clara. Valley Bird Alliance.
Does wildlife on it or something like that?
I could ask them.
Yeah.
I doubt it.
It could be a lot of fun.
If they have a little bandana that has wildlife on it or something.
Oh, yes, they do.
I used to have bandanas with brats on it. Do you know anyone with this?
They've got those.
So it's great.
Yep.
I can try calling her if it is Corky Kirk.
You should try it.
Okay.
Okay. And is there some, is there someone from um the animal rescue that we could call? Maybe we could ask Darcy if she would.
She took the bat to be euthanized.
She's very, oh, that's so sad.
So we 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 have that story to tell. Which is and it's this really great humane society place. So she knows the details on that. So CJ, we're suggesting that perhaps you talk to Darcy about getting her contacts with.
About rehab.
Rehab. There's the, it's kind of A S P C A. It's called Humanistic Animal Theater.
Talk to Darcy about what, can you repeat that?
So the bat, whenever they found the bat on the.
Use your, use the microphone so Dave can hear you.
Darcy was in charge of taking the sick bat to a animal rehab place to be euthanized. So if we were to have them come, but Darcy has them as a contact already, so if you ask Darcy to um reach out to them and see if they'd be interested in coming. That folks in town have a contact in case there's wildlife that they need help with.
Great plan.
Yeah, I think one of the other things that's practically important is that um people are easily scared to death about wildlife. For whatever reason, like mountain lions or rabid rabid bats or something. So the whole living with wildlife, um like don't freak out thing, of course, if you move here, you shouldn't. But a lot of people do. I don't, I don't, I'm not the person necessarily to talk about that, but I'm sure we could get like a ranger or. I don't know, somebody to say, you know, take a chill pill, the lion, mountain lion's not going to kill all your children or. But don't let your children wander off too far. You know, just a a practical. Kind of thing about that because people get weird.
I'd be willing to say something.
Talk, you have to talk in the microphone.
I'd be willing to say something since I teach every kid in the school district and I know all of them and I make science fun, so I could do that. And if they've been in my class, they aren't scared of wildlife. A ranger might make things a little bit, no offense, but with a uniform, that intimidates me. I love rangers. But doesn't calm me down.
Maybe we could have Smokey the Bear do it.
There you go.
So so David, is this you volunteering to come in a Smokey the Bear costume? I think that's what I heard.
That's what I heard.
Yeah, we could have some potential for that. I'll I'll have to check out the details.
Okay, that goes in the minutes. Thanks, CJ. Okay. Okay.
We thank you very much. You've added a great deal to our meeting.
Can it, can I add something here? Um I also can't see a way to raise my hand. This is Judy Murphy.
Judy, I miss you.
Um I just wanted to pop in and say that, you know, after the mountain lion death and the following of the cubs um and all that. Um we've started an effort to change the fencing regulations in order to preserve um preserve more habitat and to open up more corridors. You know, we're concerned that as um more people move into town. Um there'll be more fences and more and more of the corridors as we know them will get shut off. And um so it might be very helpful um to the wildlife that we're concerned about. If you're gonna have a proclamation about um wildlife in January, it would be lovely if your committee might consider. Um supporting this effort to make the fence of less um restrictive. That, you know, we're proposing just changing some of the ordinances about what kind of fences can be can be built. Um it's not, it's not final. It's going to A S E C again soon, but um I'd like to encourage your committee to uh step in and support this if possible.
Would it be possible to have some sort of education about this at our event, like someone have a table, which would explain the kinds of fencing that are suitable for wildlife?
Maybe, maybe. We may be move, we may be moving on it sooner than that, so that a table would be sort of the beginning of it. We're sort of at the at the end of efforts to, we had a study session about it and we've been to A S E C once and we're sort of honing in on, you know, what's the. What's the most politically acceptable things we can actually get accomplished? Um but yeah, I I can certainly keep you in the loop with what's happening and and yes, if if the timing works out so that that's good, that would be great.
Yeah, just to amplify what you just said, I'm a huge fan of that. Um and. I I would have said something except I really don't want to volunteer to actually man a table. I also think there's no danger of you being too late. Honestly, I've attended. The A S E C meeting and at least four of the Conservation Committee meetings and it is still going to be. Best case, actually, way live in January. Um it's a pretty brutal conversation because you've got the. Horse owners are all worried about this and that and what's a wildlife friendly fence and how high does the bottom half have to be or whatever. So you're not going to be too late and I do think if somebody's willing to do it, um that would be very beneficial because I'm kind of radical. Um if you want to move here, no, you can't just fence off your property. So, you know, I'm I'm a big believer in that. But I do think it's gonna be a slow at best process getting the changes into the ordinance, so.
And the function, the function of these types of events is really education and so if we can help uh teach people about what wildlife friendly fencing looks like and so on, that would be, I think that'd be a really good thing.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, what what do we have so far, CJ? How many tables?
Right now, some of our table suggestions are Mid Penn, Post, the Banana Slug. Or the Slug Band is an extra activity. We have the Audubon Society, the Bat Lady, the Lime Foundation. Um Andy has his bandanas and we're gonna add a fence.
Yeah, we just, we just need to ha- have a volunteer to help lead that fence effort.
So this is Judy again. If um I can, I can do that and get some folks to do that.
Great. That'd be awesome. Thank you, Judy. The last thing that I think will be, we'll probably think of a couple more ideas, but I'm um one of the things that really is always a good, good table is a small, small low table. With like coloring kind of thing, so wildlife coloring for little kids that come.
And also I know that Emily would love to help with the table if we have a whole bunch of skulls and bones. Is there a collection of skulls and bones somewhere?
Wildlife skulls and bones.
Yeah.
Why not?
Okay, she would love to do that one. So you want to add another table with Emily's wildlife skulls and bones. She doesn't have a permit for skulls and bones, but I know there has to be a collection somewhere. There used to be.
Yvonne has a collection of skulls and bones. We could try to contact.
Okay, great. I'll, Emily will be on that one.
Don't you think, Andy, that Yvonne has a collection of skulls and bones? Don't you think uh Yvonne has a collection of skulls and bones somewhere? Where are they?
To a large extent, no. I'm sorry to say. I collected both of those and preserved them, but uh. But the town manager. Drew them away.
Oh, that's terrible. Okay. sore subject, I think. Yeah.
Taken them all. I would have taken them all.
Okay, um. Well, we'll.
She's starting up requests, so we'll get another question.
Okay.
So far, we have the event in probably the community hall. Across from the library.
Great.
And we're gonna have a couple of tables, it looks like, and some speakers and the Banana Slug Band. Do we want to do anything else? Like, I know you wanted a movie night, Brooke.
If we were to have the event a little bit later in the day and if it's dark by five, we could show a movie from five to six. We had the event.
We could do like three to three to six.
Maybe.
Yeah, like do three to six and then set up at one? Okay, yeah.
It'd be after church.
After church, yeah.
So set up at one.
Event from three to six. I think three to, I think, yes, yeah, it's probably probably enough. Yeah. And then I was just looking at the town calendar and it looks like the January twenty fifth, there's no events on January twenty fifth right now. So um one of the things I suggest, CJ. So one of the things I suggest, CJ, is another task for you, sorry, unless you want to delegate that to someone else, is we need to talk to Darcy and find out how you fill out, if there's, you know, in the new town management, are there forms to fill out to reserve rooms? I assume that it is. I just couldn't find it on the website.
Yeah, I could probably talk to Darcy about that.
Okay. Thanks, CJ.
Now, we have to do something about our budget. Related to the budget, but they aren't dollar sign, they don't have dollar sign.
Yeah, we, we haven't actually found out what our budget is for the year. We have, we don't know what our budget is for the year.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I talked to Tony about it, and we don't have an official budget. But he did say that for twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-three was a thousand dollars, and, or a thousand and ninety-seven. And that was for, mostly for the star party that we had.
So, once we have the, the date confirmed, CJ, then we need to make some banners, make two banners. One for in front here, and then one for on Alpine Road. I actually have banners from our previous event that I could potentially update. Or make new ones. So if you want to give me that assignment, I'll do that. Well, they're, you know, when you make them new, it's like two hundred fifty dollars apiece, so.
Big signs really are effective.
Yeah, and they work. They totally work. Typically, in the past, when we've run these events, somewhere between two and four hundred people show up. It's kind of amazing, actually.
And do you want to confirm a date, or will we do that later?
I think we should confirm the, like, our, like, I don't know if we need to make a motion, to say, or you have to talk into the microphone, though.
I'd like to make a motion that we host this event on January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah.
Sunset is at five oh one.
I second the motion. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion has been approved for Sunday, January twenty-fifth.
From three to six PM?
Yes. And I shared the agenda, or the minutes with all of you guys, so you guys can see what everyone needs to do.
Perfect.
And if there's a way for us to do it, Lori and I would be happy to pitch in two hundred bucks for the event.
Thank you, David. Yeah, fantastic. I'm not sure exactly how the money flows, but we'll, I guess we need to explore that. If you write a check to the town.
Or, David, you might want to save your money for this Smokey the Bear costume.
It's gonna be expensive. That's true.
Yeah, I'm checking out what that costs. So it might be a tall lift, but yeah.
I'm, I'm sure there's one on Amazon. I'll look. Okay.
So so far, we have Mary, Bonnie, and Brooke, and Judy to to host tables, or call organizations to come and have tables, and we have Andy to get bandanas. Reaching. And then I'll talk to Darcy about the bat program, they can come. And about renting the community hall. So should I, Judy, if you want me, I can send you the link to the agenda if you want to see, or the minutes, if you want to see it.
Sure, thank you.
I don't have your email, though.
I think I still have yours. I'll, I'll send, I'll send it to you.
Okay.
And it just occurred to me that one of the most frequent interactions a lot of people have with wildlife, other than rats eating their car wiring, is snakes. And I think in a lot of cases, it's like, take the shovel to the head of the snake, because we don't know what it is. So I'm not proposing, I don't know, have any solutions, but if I don't know, anyone, you just appellate, I mean, a sheriff's thing, or whatever, want to come talk about snakes, and how to tell which ones are, might kill you, and which ones are killing all your rats. I think if that would be possible, I think that would be useful.
Brooke, do we know any snake experts? Andy? We can have a nature and science table focused on snakes.
I wish I had a gopher snake in my yard right now.
A few, few of gophers.
You have to talk into the microphone.
There are bulls that are overtaking the Corder Madera school garden right now, so I just wish we had some gopher snakes up.
Yeah.
Yes.
So it's, yeah, it's now five after six, just doing a time check. Can everybody hang out? How much, how much more time, CJ, do you think we're gonna need?
The other business, it was more if we had time, and this is all for twenty-twenty-six, like, probably later, earliest maybe like February. So we did talk about the wildflower walk, the, I talked about having a youth climate action, which would be a video competition. And then the budget and fiscal year, I found out right there. Andy wanted to request the reuse of banners. He also wanted to have a star party or a bird walk in twenty-twenty-six sometime.
Can we defer all those topics to our December meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so just some recap, what I have, we're gonna have, set up at one, the event is three to six, I'll try and get it in the community hall. And we're gonna have a movie after. Each of us are gonna call some organization, set up tables. Do we need to rent tables?
No, we have a lot of tables, which is great. That's why, yeah, so if we get there at one, we can set up all the tables, and then all the, all the people who are leveraging the tables can come at one thirty. So the committee shows up at one, we get all the tables and chairs out that we need, then one thirty, our guest presenters come, man their tables, set up.
Okay, so they'll, they will bring tables? We don't already have them?
We have them.
We do, okay.
Yeah, we're gonna come, we're gonna set up at one.
Okay. And then we have a lot of organizations that will hopefully come. I still need, I don't know if I have Mary's email, if I can.
I'll send it to you.
In this, okay. And then will I need to send a email telling everyone what organizations they need to call? A sheet, okay, I can create that.
Right, so we can have one column that, are they confirmed, who did it, what needs to be done? Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense. So, yeah, if I could, Bonnie, if you could send me, or Judy and David could send me their emails, and Mary's email, that would be great.
Yeah, I'm sending it to you right now.
One other semi-random thought is we have probably multiple falconers in town. I know Valerie Baldwin is one. I could ping her, whatever, to see if she currently has a bird she can bring, you know, on a tether and all that sort of stuff.
That'd be super fun. What's, what's her name?
Valerie Baldwin.
Valerie Baldwin.
Yeah, she's, she's had a lot of talks, I mean, a lot of hawks over years. Some of them have died, I know, so I don't know if she has one currently that would be suitable, but I could certainly ask her.
Oh, that'd be awesome. So CJ, you want to, you can, when you get a chance, add that to your list, that we would potentially have a hawk or a falcon display with Valerie Baldwin, and David Cardinal will reach out. Did you, I did find some inexpensive bear costumes on Amazon. They're only thirty dollars, Dave.
Yeah, well, they, I don't know, they might fit you better than me, so we'll have to talk about that.
Okay. We'll see.
Yes, okay, so I'm just gonna recap on the organizations that we're gonna have. So we're gonna get Mid Penn, and Mary's gonna hopefully get them. Bonnie's gonna get Post, Brooke's gonna get the Banana Slug Band. Bonnie's gonna get the Bird Alliance. Brooke is gonna get the Bat Lady. Bonnie's gonna get the Lime, the Bay Area Lime Foundation. Judy will have a fencing table. There will be a coloring table for children. Emily will have a skulls and bones table. Andy will try and get some bandanas from REI. We're gonna have a movie after the event. I'll reach out to Darcy about the bat. Wildlife savior organization, and I'll try and rent the community hall with Darcy. Nature and science table, too. Okay. And then David will get Valerie Baldwin for a bald eagle, potentially.
You're not really allowed to keep, yeah, it's falcon or hawk, and I'll ask her, I don't, she's had them before, but they die, so I'm not sure what her current status is.
Okay.
I think we need a deadline for making these calls, CJ. What do you think about having a deadline be the end of, the end of November? So everybody updates the spreadsheet on what's going on by the end of November?
Yeah, that works, so.
And then we'll be prepared for our December meeting to talk about.
November thirtieth, how about that?
Perfect.
Yeah, just to clarify, as far as, I think you have a date, January twenty-fifth, I just want to make sure, and before I talk to Valerie.
Yes.
It, it should.
Yes, Sunday the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
And CJ, maybe you can, I don't know if you have time to email Darcy, like, tonight, so that she can respond back whether that date is, you know, we confirm the date is available, and what the process is to reserve the room. Because that'll be sort of urgent. For our discussions, trying to get people to come, just knowing that that's available.
So I'll email her about the deadline, is that what she said, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, we might be a wrap.
Yes. Okay.
Do you want to formally adjourn the meeting?
Yes, so how would I?
You just, you say, the meeting is adjourned.
Meeting is adjourned at six twelve.